Wow, there's a lot of feedback. Okay. Thank you, everybody, for being here this evening. We'll call the meeting to order. It's our special meeting to discuss the budget on Tuesday, April 21st, 2020. If we could please have a roll call. Councilmember Dulles.
Here.
Councilmember Lamond.
Here.
Councilmember Harvey.
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore. Vice Mayor Moore? He has not checked in. Should we hold on for just a moment? I didn't do a head count before we started. Let's pause for just a couple moments. I'll
Sure.
See if, um, maybe, uh, Lauren, could you?
Yeah.
Can you call offline? Thanks.
Thank you. I'm in, Lauren.
Okay. Mayor Coleman, if you want, uh, we can start roll call again or just before? Um, why don't we just continue from where we were? Just got the last two of us in there. Okay. Vice Mayor Moore.
Present.
And Mayor Coleman. Present. Thank you. So now, um, we'll move on to public comment and then I also just want to let members of the public know we'll be having an additional, uh, time for public comments after the presentation of the budget. Um, so I believe there was just, uh, one attendee. If you could, um, give a call of the attendee, please, Lauren?
Sure.
George Berich? Go ahead.
Speaking, council, former city councilman George Berich. Before I speak on the issues, uh, before you tonight, I want to make one co- comment about the procedure of the meeting. Um, I tried to log into this meeting tonight using the city's, uh, meeting portal on your website and the link there does not work. So I am concerned about other citizens who use the website to participate in this meeting tonight and are not able to. I had to call a neighbor up the street, got an invite from the city clerk, which has a completely different link to come on to the, uh, the meeting tonight. That particular link did work. But the website itself inviting our fellow citizens and taxpayers to come into the meeting is not working. Uh, that's a, that's a big problem. Um, it's denying people access to this meeting through a reasonable, uh, effort. And I would say that it would probably make sense to adjourn this meeting to a time and place certain where these links work so that everybody in the community who wants to can participate. Uh, and now on the issue before you on the budget tonight, um, it should be no surprise that given the situation of the, uh, crisis that we're going through right now, everything that I'm reading says that these cities, municipalities, and counties could be experiencing between 10 to 30% reduction in revenue of not only other water budgets, but also other taxes and special taxes and so forth. If that's the case, I think we need to be proactive to anticipate very large, uh, reduction in anticipated revenues, uh, going forward. I think it's fair to say that there's going to be a, a large number of our local citizens who are not going to pay their water bills. They may pay a portion of their water bills. They may not pay them at all. Um, maybe 10, 20% in the next few months. And, uh, the city needs to take some kind of action on how you're going to handle that, uh, given this budget, uh, discussion. And also, secondly, I'm also very concerned that the city has a standing policy right now to turn off water service uh, to those people who are, um, generally late, uh, on their water bills. I'd like you to, um, uh, address that issue. I know that's not on the agenda tonight, but I need you to address that issue because we're going to be turning off people's water here in the next 30 to 60 days for non-payment. Uh, we have women and children and elderly people in these homes that need that water and it would behoove us to ignore this fact right now. So good luck on the budget meeting tonight and thank you.
Okay, Mayor Coleman, that is all for our attendees. Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to the study session and I believe I'm turning it over to, um, City Manager Damian Obed.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So as, uh, you all know, tonight we're talking about the enterprise budgets. So that's our water and sewer system budgets. Um, enterprise, just meaning that they are fee for service. So they're not supported by any sort of tax revenue. They're supported by user fees. And then also, um, we're talking about the internal service funds. Primarily the vehicle replacement fund where the, um, on the aside each year you budget for, um, vehicle, eventual vehicle replacements. Um, rather than paying for them out of the annual operating budget. We, uh, basically save money for, for future replacements there. And then also, um, the compensated absences fund. Again, this is just another way to, um, smooth out operating expenses as, um, when employees retire or separate from the city, then it, um, it allows uh, that process to, you know, a process to occur without, um, any sort of operational impacts. So, um, tonight we have, uh, Angela Porter, our Director of Administrative Services, that's been taking the lead on the presentation. And we also have Craig Scott, our Director of Public Works, that will, come in and, um, do part of the presentation as well. Of course, we're all here. Uh, myself and all the department heads are here for questions or comments that come up. And as we go through the, um, so we go through the presentation itself, um, feel free to stop us if you, if anyone has any questions along the way. And then, um, I think like the mayor said at the end of the presentation. With that, Angela, um, if you would, please take it away.
Thank you, Damian. Um, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, fellow staff, and members of the public. Uh, so hopefully you can all hear me okay and see the fruit, the slides just fine. Um, tonight we're continuing our series of budget planning meetings with our first budget study session. So this session is really a key part of our annual budget process where we as staff can first share the status of the expectations of the budget for the current year, which is 1920. Secondly, share what is known regarding our upcoming year, 2021, and to give you the council and public the opportunity to really respond to the presentation, provide direction on the items to be included within our budget as we continue to move forward. So here's our, um, tentative schedule. We started our current budget planning cycle with our strategic planning session on April 9th. During this session, we presented to council and the public the overall strategic objectives and the overall budget focus to be used going forward. Along with these objectives, each department presented key projects that were planned for the fiscal year 2021, which coordinated with these city objectives. Though this is not historically done, at this strategic planning session, we also presented to the council a summary of our fiscal forecast of our key revenue streams for our continuous citizen support here in Katati. We filled out these assumptions based on our known fiscal responses from both the state and the federal level, um, in order to assist the local businesses, as well as our known historical effects, um, that have happened to Katati during these economic downturns. For those in attendance, I would really highly recommend watching that session from April 9th since there was really a great discussion about our expectations and the continued fluidity of the possible effects to our local economy due to this COVID-19 worldwide emergency. Um, so that was our first session there in April 9th. And now we're here at April 21st and we're going through our first introduction of our expectations and plans for the water and sewer, except water and sewer enterprise funds. And then after the enterprise funds, we'll jump briefly into the internal service funds for both, like Damian said, the vehicle replacement and the compensated absences funds. Our next budget study session is tentatively scheduled for May 5th where we'll cover the remaining funds, primarily the general fund that's broken down into revenues and expenditures by department, as well as the special revenue funds and our capital projects, which are aligned with our five-year CIP schedule. The final pieces of the buddies, budget study sessions are on May 19th, tentatively, where we'll be submitting the final packet with all the funds as presented during the study sessions with the adjustments and recommendations taken from council in order to add, to identify other additional changes, recommendations, or other economic items that we find due to this fluidity of where we are right now. Um, and then on June 11th, hopefully adopting the full, um, budget document. So again, during that April 9th strategic planning session, the city recommended the, uh, really a three-part strategic objective format. And the first being community where we strive to personalize and expand public communication, events, and project information. Second is to continue our investments in infrastructure, primarily with roads, parks, and city buildings. And certainly not last, but is our continued focus on economic development by focusing on existing opportunities, evaluating key market changes, and adapt businesses to the new reality and identify and removing barriers for key development sites. So as mentioned before, these are really the focus for our budget development going forward into these study sessions. And each department brought forth their projects that correlate with these. And the enterprise funds are not excluded from this. However, they do have a separate overriding principle, which Damian, um, mentioned, which is, um, to account for operations. Um, so the enterprise funds really are used to account for operations which function in a manner similar to a private business. So their intent is to provide a good like water and services like removal of wastewater and covering that cost through user fees or charges. So the focus for these funds is really to continue to provide the best service and good to our, uh, customers at a manageable cost that is not a detriment to the rest of the city operations. Um, and really these, um, funds have to be self-sufficient and stand alone, just like a business would have to be. So the budget highlights for the enterprise funds in the whole are that the, for the fiscal year 2021, we'll still continue to maintain our operating reserve of 33%. We are maintaining, um, the council adopted rate changes, uh, which was evaluated under our fiscal study that we performed this year. And will be presented by Craig Scott, our city engineer and public works director. Um, consistent with our methodology here in Katati, we are very conservative with our estimates and revenues and base them on static customer usage and limited connection fees from developments. Lastly, the infrastructure improvements are now realigned to, um, notch that five-year CIP program which came to council previously. So for a further deep dive in the water funds, um, and for reference in the meeting packet, there was specific worksheets which have detailed information on the actual expense accounts, expense types, revenue accounts, revenue types, um, for each one of the funds, as well as at a combined level. But the overall assumptions that went into the water funds, um, as mentioned earlier, is that the budget includes the previously adopted rate adjustments. And these rates are really determined, um, in order to meet what the overall cost of maintaining the infrastructure and equipment, as well as that cost of purchasing the water. During the current fiscal year, we did complete the financial review, which was an evaluation of those rates in order to meet those costs of maintaining infrastructure and equipment and purchasing the water. And it was noted that there really was no adjustment needed for the 2021 year. Our connection fees for water capital accounts were set to receive an additional $106,000 in the SCIP bond funds, which will reimburse ourselves for the cost of the proposed Well 1A filter, media filter, and replacement project. The other capital projects that are included in this fiscal year include the water SCADA program and a separate SCADA server upgrade and relocation, which have an estimated total cost of $37,500 for the water capital fund. So with that being, we also, um, so that really plays on to the capital projects and the revenue assumptions. Our operating assumptions are that the personnel services are estimated at full stopping and that we're going to continue those payments, program payments to compensated absences fund, which is our internal service fund to make those payments, um, for payouts for, for unknown, um, payroll-related expenses. We also allocated, the allocated contract services are estimated to increase based on the CPI and that we're going to have continual, um, conservation programs at the same level we had in 1920. So after we take these assumptions into account, we get, uh, to a combined water funds budget of in 2021 where revenues are at 2.128 million and the operating expenditures are at 1.877 million. So again, these details, these account balance and estimates are included, um, in the budgetary workbooks that were within the packet. Um, so and Craig is, was going to now present, uh, the next few slides, which is going to go further into the financial review that was performed this fiscal year, which sets us up, uh, for this budget expectations for 2021, as well as how we're going to keep an eye on our future for this fund.
Thank you, Angela. Uh, Craig Scott, Public Works Director, uh, City Engineer Member, uh, Count. Mayor, members of the council, um, as Angela mentioned, the financial plan was updated. Um, if you could back up one slide, um, in, in 2019 and into 2020 for the water and sewer utilities. And the financial plan used the, the 1920 budget, which we just looked at in, uh, by itself, and then uses that as a starting point to project out 10 years. And, um, using also the five-year CIP, which was recently reviewed, um, and, uh, approved, adopted by both the Planning Commission and the City Council back in the fall. Um, and it's also based on the best available information and reasonable assumptions. So that slide there shows the, the main fund, not, not that one.
That one?
That one. Yes, that's, that's, yes. Um, and so the, 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 the water operating fund is the largest, the, the main fund of the water utility and all of the revenues come into it except for the connection fees. And, um, this is a projection for that operations fund, which is, uh, uh, let's see, um, expenses. So you've, you've got that, the revenue projection in the red line up, up top and then the rest are in this area graph are the expenses. And from the bottom to the top of the chart, we have the wholesale water purchase from Sonoma Water in the blue there. And then the, um, the rusty color is, are the O and M expenses. These are labor, materials, chemicals, uh, fixing pipe leaks, uh, all, uh, vehicle maintenance, all of that. And then we also have the debt service in green and then transfers to the capital fund across the top. Um, as Angela had mentioned, the, uh, this fund keeps a, the, our goal is to keep a 33% annual operating for a reserve that equals the annual operating and maintenance cost plus debt service. And so that reserve's purpose is for unexpected, um, you know, working capital for unexpected and unplanned, uh, operating and maintenance expenditures. If there's an emergency, a major pipe break, a major piece of equipment, uh, breaks down or what have you. Um, all right. So the primary assumption staying on this graph, uh, we've got, um, the inflation rates. So we're assuming, uh, general inflation of 3% per year and then construction inflation of 3.5% per year. Uh, wholesale water costs from, uh, Sonoma Water going up. This is what we've been holding to. It's been working very well for us, about 6% a year. And then, um, we could focus in on water growth projections because this also drives revenues. Uh, the update assumes an increase in water usage for 1920 will be, will be 1%. And this is despite the relatively dry conditions which we saw in February of this year. Um, so, so we would have expected the water increase, water consumption to increase more. But we're trying to, uh, project what the impact is going to be of COVID-19 on slowing down commercial operations. Um, and moving forward from there, we're assuming there'll be no increase in the water usage from, uh, this 2021 and beyond. Um, we did, what's new, um, in the model is adding the additional costs of the vehicle replacement, um, program and then also emergency operations center costs. We, um, moving forward with, with P S P S events, there was, um, a quantifiable expense for renting generators and then moving out into the future, buying generators so we can tow them around to certain sites, um, or, or fix them at certain well sites. So we have backup power. Okay. So we can go to the next slide, uh, which is the water capital fund summary. And, uh, this, the purpose of this is to save up money to pay for planned capital improvements. And, uh, the funding source, uh, sources are the water connection fees I, as I had mentioned, plus transfers from the water O and M fund. So the main driver in this part, this, this projection is trying to figure out what connection fees would be moving forward. And so as Angela had mentioned, the Kessing Ranch, we have for those 47 homes with the SCIP financing that, those, that fund already, um, those monies. And then in future years, we're projecting a quarter of a percent growth each year in, uh, for, in, uh, in new homes going up. Uh, Centerra Way, as recently as in the fall, um, maybe even in January, was, was actually included in the fund model, but because of recent events, we've decided that's probably overly optimistic just with, uh, all the uncertainty out there. Again, you know, it's always good to be conservative for projecting rates. Then, uh, to, to moderate the impact on rates, the financial plan update that recommends that the water fund issue new debt, the fund most of the costs for the new Cypress tank, uh, the Cypress tank booster pumps and the West Sierra tank recoding. So, um, as you see here, the purple on the graph are the, representing the projects. And so that, that first, um, step up is the design of those facilities, the Cypress tank, um, and pump station. And then the larger climb there is to actually for the, um, pay for that project for the construction. And so you'll see that the revenue, uh, kind of ramps up there for the, the fund balance and then it's depleted, um, for paying for that project as well as, um, then, uh, along with the, the monies that are from funding it from the, the bond sales. Okay. So the, this is the, this is summarizing here. We've got for the water financial plan goes out 10 years. The operating costs continue to increase. Uh, the timing and amount of capital spending has changed significantly since the 2017 study. Um, and that is by definition, you know, it's a very direct, iterative process where we, we are, um, you know, move, move the, uh, capital projects around or push them up, defer them just to smooth the impact on rates. And so we did see that Cypress water tank get moved out. It is in alignment with the five-year CIP because it, uh, we, we just completed that five-year CIP not too long ago. Um, the current adopted rates are sufficient and appropriate through 21, 22. That's our, the five-year program that we're currently on and we see no need to change that. Uh, if, if debt is issued to finance the Cypress tank project, uh, including the booster tank, uh, or booster pumps and West Sierra tank recoding. Um, then we would, we recommend a, a new financial plan be conducted, be prepared by the end of 21, 22 to adopt rates starting in, uh, 22, 23. So that's, that's a, a wrap-up of the financial plan for water modeling. At this point, I'll, I'd like to hand it back to Angela Porter to talk about the sewer fund.
Thank you, Craig. Um, so just like the water fund, the sewer fund also provides, uh, we also provided a workbook form within the meeting packet, which has a detailed level of the revenues and expenditures. Um, but we also want to explain to you all this similar, though the assumptions are very similar to water. We need to go through these because it still acts very differently. Um, I do want to point out firstly, though, we did identify there was, um, some missing expenditures for fiscal year 1819 in the sewer capital fund. And so there are a couple edits that will be coming, um, back to you, which will just kind of roll up into that fund balance, which plays into the rest of these, of course. Um, but those will be corrected and, uh, for the budget books that are coming back to council on May 19th. So as far as the actual revenues and expenditures as, uh, estimated for 1920 and as well as, uh, proposed for 2021, they are all still accurate and, and complete as far as our assumptions that we've built out here. But the fund balance will have some changes due to that, um, omitted amount that was in the fiscal year 1819. So consistent with the water fund, as you said, the sewer fund assumptions built into the budget to include the previously adopted rate adjustments. And these rates are determined by the overall cost of maintaining the infrastructure, the equipment, as well as the cost of treatment of this wastewater. During the fiscal year, we, we concurrently completed a, a financial review for the sewer funds, just like we did for the water funds. Um, and it was noted that there was no adjustment that was needed to our current plans for the 2021 year. For our connection fees within the water capital accounts, we received approximately $660,000 already in 2019, 20 fiscal year due to that SCIP bond reimbursement. $660,000 already in 2019, 20 fiscal year due to that SCIT bond reimbursement, um, all relating to the Kessing Ranch, um, project. The new capital projects included for the sewer funds include their sewer portion of the SCADA server upgrade and relocation costs, which are estimated to cost around $22,000 for the capital fund. We're going to continue the manhole lateral repair and improvement project, which is estimated at $150,000. We are currently working on and will be completing the William Olaf sewer replacement project, which for the 2021 year is estimated at $355,000 as well as purchasing three new, um, sewer lift station generators, um, totaling approximately $90,000. So with all these things within our revenues and our capital expenditures piece, we also built in our operating expenditure, um, expectations similarly to the water fund where personnel services are assumed at fully staffed and we're going to continue that payment to the compensated absences fund. We're going to increase the contract services that are allocated to this fund based on the CPI. Uh, we are going to increase the sewer treatment costs based on those, uh, cost budget estimates coming through us as well as, uh, increased expense to the vehicle replacement and maintenance service funds for specific vehicles that need to be replaced related to the sewer So after all these assumptions are taken into account, we get to a combined sewer fund budget for the 2021 where the revenues are estimated at 2.86 million with the operating expenditures at 3.2 million. And again, this is taking into account those increased, uh, sewer treatment costs. And the details of the account balances and estimates for the current fiscal year are included within the budgetary workbooks included in the packet. So Craig is now going to present, uh, the next few slides, which kind of go through the, um, financial review that was performed based on the sewer, uh, projections and estimates for the projects as well as, um, infrastructure needs for the sewer fund.
Thank, thank you, Angela. This is Craig again. So the next slide shows the sewer operating fund summary going out 10 years. The sewer operating fund, we, um, for both the water and sewer, we did a financial model back in 2017. And then we took a, a closer look at the sewer model and updated it in 2018 because we knew we had the, uh, P1, P1 sewer, uh, the, the large project that the, the city has completed. Um, and then we've reviewed both funds again in 2019. Okay. So back to this slide, this is the, uh, similar to the water fund, the sewer operations fund is the main sewer enterprise fund. All the revenues except for the water connect, uh, the sewer connection fees flow into this fund. Um, and then expenses going from the bottom to the top, we've got the subregional wastewater treatment, um, expenses. That is, we, along with other neighboring cities, uh, Rar, Park and, um, Sebastopol and others, um, have combined and entered into this agreement to, uh, just to operate collection system and send our wastewater to the city of Santa Rosa's Laguna wastewater treatment plant. And so, uh, we get billed directly on the flow. The, the bill we get is directly proportional to the flow that is metered to that plant. Um, and as you can see, it's the most of the expenses for the enterprise fund. It's, it's two-thirds, two-thirds of the expenses. The next, which is the rusty colored, um, band there is the O and M costs. These are labor, um, vehicle maintenance, uh, cleaning sewers, just all, all the, the work we do to keep the collection system in good operating shape as well as the, the four lift stations that we have. And, uh, as, as a, um, a, a recent focus is providing backup power to those lift stations to carry us through power outages, which seem to be a more common occurrence these days. Um, the sewer operating reserve, yeah, similar to water has, uh, we like to keep the 33% of annual operating and maintenance costs, including debt service to define that dashed line at the bottom. And we do not want, um, the, the fund balance to drop below that because again, the purpose of that reserve is to provide working capital and funds for unplanned operating and maintenance expenditures. All right. The process used to update the financial plan involves estimating future revenues and expenditures based on estimates of future conditions, uh, starting with the 2019, 2020 budget and then existing debt service schedules and capital improvement plans, um, as, and, and this is consistent, uh, with the five-year capital improvement program that was recently presented and adopted by council. The financial plan is based on the best available information and reasonable assumptions. So just moving forward 10 years, there's just, um, you know, it's, it's, we're, we're necessarily having to make projections, assumptions on, um, items that will impact our revenues and expenses. Um, even, I didn't mention this for the water, but for, for both the water and sewer fund with the fund balance there, um, the model takes into account what kind of return we would get on investments. And so before, in the prior model, it was 1.9%. And since the COVID-19 pandemic, with all the uncertainty, we've cut that interest earning capacity to half a percent. Um, inflation rates are the same, three percent per year, uh, for general inflation and then construction inflation at three and a half percent. The wastewater treatment plan expenses, uh, had a, an adjustment this year, um, because the prior flow meter was, had degraded and actually became inoperable probably about a half a decade ago. Um, and the city, um, uh, Santa Rosa directed the city and the city went ahead and installed a, a new flow meter. And instead of, we installed it actually very close to our corporation yard. So it's, uh, the next step is to get that to communicate directly with our SCADA system. We do have readings, uh, that, um, are available to us and we're using, we have been using that for, um, for the last 10 months. And, um, when, when we went over to that from the estimate, the estimate must, um, appear to be low because now the new readings on the, uh, water, the wastewater meter are reading anywhere from 20 to 35% higher. Uh, the more data we get, the more we'll know if that diff, uh, what that difference is. But, uh, it looks like it is reading higher and so that's leading to a 15% increase in our, the first full year that our rates are going to be based on that meter. And we'll see, um, if, uh, we're just assuming that that relationship, that, that, that new meter is, um, that, that's going to be used into the future. Uh, so that's built into this model. Uh, the connection fee, the Kessing Ranch, uh, fee for all 47 homes has been received. And so that's in the model. And then moving forward, we are looking at a quarter of a percent per year, uh, some identical to the water and the, um, the other projects that until recently were, um, in the model, we've taken out such as Cantati Station and others because of the uncertainty with the, the pandemic. Um, for the sewer flows, the, um, what, what's, what tends to be true is that about half of the residential water use is going to the sewer with most of it, you know, over the course of a year. And so, um, with a one percent, remember with water, we talked about, um, even though it's, we had a dry winter, we're, we're only assuming a one percent increase year over year in water use. So that translates into a half percent increase in the, um, amount of flow year over year finding its way into the wastewater collection system. So that's what the assumption is for 2021. And then because water use is assumed to be flat, we'll carry that over into the sewer and have the sewer flows remain flat for the remaining years of this, uh, 10-year model. Um, okay. The financial, so for sewer O and M costs, um, so it's based on the 2019, 20 actual costs with future estimates, uh, based on the assumed inflation and growth rates. Um, the three percent inflation and then three and a half percent for construction. Uh, in addition to the flow meter, the new flow meter and the adjustment there, the subregional system is replacing its ultraviolet treatment, uh, final treatment system. And so there's a debt service that's going to translate, I think to about $50,000 a year out of that, uh, $2 million dollars that we paid to the subregional system. Um, O and M fund balance. Um, so you can see the, the fund balance on the chart starting pretty high and then it's brought down to stabilize rates, um, and, and, and to pay for the increasing subregional wastewater treatment costs, which increase. Um, and, and, you know, so, so we, we're trying to moderate the impact of the wastewater treatment plan increases on the rates. Um, and then half of the, those reserves are transferred to the sewer capital fund, which we will go to next. Um, okay. So again, the sewer capital fund is, uh, receives revenue from the connection fees and transfers from the sewer, sewer O and M fund. And it's to save up money to pay for large capital projects. The first spike there is of course the P1 sewer, which was completed in the fall of 2018. And then, uh, the, the revenue, the balance there climbs up from the bottom and we're, we're building it up gradually over the first five or six years as we're doing about $100,000 of, um, the manhole repla, uh, repairs and lateral fixes. Um, it's typically called a sewer INI, um, project, which is inflow and infiltration. And this is water entering the sewer from the groundwater and from rainfall events. And so it's getting us the biggest bang for the buck to go after reducing those inflows and, uh, that in turn reduces our, um, our payment to the subregional plant. Um, and so we're doing the $100,000, uh, approximately it's up nearly $100,000 a year on the INI reduction project. And then when we get to 20, 20, 26, 27, uh, that's when we're looking at continuing the, uh, P1 sewer project. This is now the P2A, um, for the Laguna bypass. And it, it continues where the P1 sewer left off, which was at St. Joseph's Way and Old Redwood Highway, then continued down Old Redwood Highway to, uh, William or George Street. Um, and that, that's beyond the five-year, uh, period horizon that we looked at in the five-year CIP, but it is memorialized in our, uh, sewer master plan, which goes out to build out of the system. Um, all right. Capital projects, uh, okay. So now we're in summary, um, while the operating costs have increased, uh, capital spending is lower than projected. And again, that's by design. We just spent, had a big project with the P1 sewer and so we're looking to optimize the, uh, keep, keep the spending low, but give us our biggest bang for the buck by reducing INI, um, and build up those cash reserves. And that reserve were the next leg of the, um, the Laguna bypass sewer. The, uh, also, one of the primary reasons for the study was to, to see if we needed to make an adjustment, but, uh, study is recommending, hey, we're, are currently adopted. Our five-year rate program is sufficient and appropriate through 21, 22. So we're staying the course on that and a new financial plan should be conducted prior to the end of 21, 22 to adopt rates starting in 22, 23. And that includes the financial model summary and I'd like to go ahead and hand this presentation back to Angela.
Thank you, Craig. Um, so if you can bear with me just a little bit longer, um, we only have two more funds, but these are definitely a lot more straightforward than the, the depth and, um, breadth of the water and sewer enterprise funds. So these are our newly, newly created internal service funds, which are funds that are used to account for financing objectives, um, within the city, but where services or goods are provided from one department or agency to other departments and agencies. So the two that we currently use here for the city of Cantati are the vehicle replacement fund as well as the compensated absences fund. So in summary, the budget highlights for both of these funds is that we are goals are to really maintain appropriate reserve to meet the expenditure needs for these service funds. We need to make sure that we have an appropriate balance within there to continue to possibly, uh, provide repairs and maintenance for, for, uh, city fleet as well as meet additional possible payouts or compensation needs, um, as required by those internal service funds. We have a proposed schedule for the vehicle replacement, which includes a scheduled replacement of our equipment, um, based on an estimated useful life of each piece of equipment that we have within this fund. Um, the compensated absences for the fiscal year 1920, um, were adjusted to only meet the current payout needs so that we're not extending additional funding for future payments at the, the 1920 level. We're going to continue that into the 2021, but we didn't over, want to overextend due to the nature of where we are right now, um, with our economics. We want to make sure that we're, um, retaining funds, general funds and water and sewer as needed and not, um, unnecessarily transferring funds that were not needed for the cap, compensated absences fund as of this point in time. But we still want to continue to plan for those in the future for the 2021. So we do, um, generate those again for the next fiscal year where the expenditures or revenues are allocated based on the FTE of the liability for both the compensated absences. And it also applies to the vehicle replacements where, so the vehicle's usage is determined and that again is where those expenditures and revenues are allocated is based on the usage of each vehicle. So the program for the vehicle replacement includes the replacement of a flatbed dump truck, a utility pickup truck, a 2005 Crown Victoria. And then we're also going to be, um, purchasing the two lift station generators through this replacement fund. So again, this puts the new equipment into the schedule, so they'll be in there for replacements going forward. But then the ones that are being replaced, they would then be either sold at auction or processed in a manner with our fixed asset policy, um, and then replaced with the new vehicles. For the compensated absences fund, we're really designing this to maintain a government-wide compensated absences liability. And this allows us to fill out the proportionate usage of the balance based on of the balance based on the funds and departments that are using it. And this allows us to really match or better match the expenses for payouts in the periods where they're earned and become a liability as compared to when they are actually paid out in cash. So it allows us a better understanding of what the expenditures are to date in matching those pieces. And we're planning on continuing to increase these balances to address the estimated changes in the salaries and benefits schedule that are going to continue to come forward and are part of both included within the sewer and water funds as well as what will come forward in the future, general funds for salaries and benefits. So in conclusion, we really have a well-rounded budget proposed for both the water and sewer funds, where we're being prudent and mindful of the revenues and expenditures and making sure that everything is really aligned with where we expect things to be as well as taking into consideration where we are currently. Our operating reserve requirements are continuing to be met for both the water and sewer operating funds. We as city staff will continue to update the council on significant budgetary changes. And there's the one I did identify, so there will be a significant change coming as it pertains to the sewer capital fund for 2019, it plays in the fund balance. So that will be there and we will continue to update you on any of the changes that come in to the further iterations that come back to council during our study sessions. And we are going to continue to be diligent and focus on providing the best estimates and evaluations of where we see these funds estimating at the end of 1920 is our current struggle. Because we want to make sure that we are, we are addressing the emergency that we are in right now and what is happening, what might happen. And we feel like we're really doing that with what we've presented today as well as trying to play out how our fiscal plan that we performed during the current fiscal year, how that sets up for the future, including just our immediate future here in 2021. So with that, I will finish my presentation and turn it over to council for questions.
Okay, thank you very much for the presentation. And I wanted to take a moment just because it came up at the beginning of the meeting. The public announcements for the meetings that are posted in public and also online include the live stream meeting portal for people who just want to watch and listen to the meeting live. Or obviously you can look at it online or on the local channel 28 later on as well when they broadcast it. And then the next part of the announcement tells people if they want to actually participate in the meeting, they need to contact our city clerk by email or by telephone up to 5 o'clock on the day of the meeting so that they can get the specific information as well as a password. As some of the other cities learned the hard way, if you don't password protect your meetings, people will do what has become known as Zoom bombing and interrupt your meetings and wreak all kinds of havoc. So anyway, just wanted to clarify that for the record. And then I'll bring it back to council. I see council member DeLasso has his hand up. So Lauren, if you could, or council member DeLasso, he could go to you?
Great, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. And thanks for the presentation, both Angela and Craig. There was a question that Mr. Berge brought up at the beginning of the meeting. And it's a really good question, but I'm a little confused because I think we may have been already addressed this. But he mentioned about turning people's water off, especially in these times, maybe if they're out of work right now, they can't pay. But if I'm not mistaken, and please correct me if I'm wrong, maybe, Danny, this is a question for you, that there was a Senate bill passed by Senator Dodd that we've discussed at a couple of meetings and I believe we've passed. And that was to extend a very long grace period for people to pay. And that was even before the COVID-19 issue came up and started causing all kinds of economic havoc. Am I on the right track with that?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember DeLasso. So I'm glad you brought that up. I was going to mention it at some point during this presentation, but we do have, so first of all, we're not, per council adopted policy earlier this year, it allows flexibility as well as financing options for customers. So, you know, right now, we're not turning, for the time being, we're not turning anyone's service off. And we also offer our customers that need assistance, we offer both a payment deferral program and a payment financing program for up to 12 months if they are having struggles from, you know, for a billing cycle or so. So we're, we're definitely working with our customers. And this was all, this all came from the policy discussion that the council had earlier this year and adopted it. So that's where things stand right now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I saw there was another council member with their hand up, but it's gone back down. So is there anybody else on the council who had a question or comment about the presentation? Okay, I don't see anybody quickly unmuting themselves. So as I said at the beginning, we can open it back up for public comments. So Lauren, if you could facilitate that, thank you. Sure, Mayor Scomin, I don't see anybody with their hands up. And I handed it up. Go ahead, Mr. Berge.
Thank you, council. I have a question that goes to Mr. Scott's presentation. He talked about how he's going to be, or they're going to be judging the impact of COVID-19 on all of this going forward. My question is, are you making assumptions and projections as you talk about, given the lack of revenue that's going to be coming in from all these unemployed people in Catati going forward? I hear you talk about a half percent, but I almost had to chuckle. Surely it's not a half percent reduction in revenue that you are projecting with the fallout of COVID-19. It sounds to me that the council or staff is deliberately sabotaging the enterprise fund with this budget analysis in order to be in a position for a state or federal bailout. Because the budget that just went forward makes no sense to me, makes no sense to anybody with any common sense. You've been watching the news at all the last few years. Now, another issue is Mr. Lammon has been texting outside this meeting, during this meeting, the people on nextdoor.com and in violation of the Brown Act, giving other citizens preferential access and treatment to converse with Mr. Lammon online while this meeting is going on. This is also an ethics violation per your code of conduct for council members. And I think someone on this council needs to lodge a complaint. And we have proof of that. Lammon continues to embarrass the council by these acts and risks unwanted litigation for the city. It is outrageous, Mayor and council, that Mr. Lammon is carrying on conversations online while this meeting is going on. He should be giving the taxpayers and staff and you folks his undivided attention. Would you not disagree? I would like an investigation into this. Thank you very much.
All right, Mayor Scomin, back to you. Okay, thank you. So I'm going to check one more time and see if there's anybody on council with questions or comments before we adjourn. Thank you very much for that presentation. It's
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Lammon.
Hi, I just unmuted. I wasn't sure if you saw that. Two things. First of all, yeah, looking back at the impact in the future, obviously, there is a bit of estimation for everybody at this point. And I think that's pretty obvious to anybody who's actually honestly assessing what's going on. But to suggest that tonight's presentation is designed as to deliberately sabotage our budget to get a federal bailout, bailout, I'm not sure if our staff are that eager to throw our finances on the tender mercies of the incumbent of the White House. So I, I think that might be a bit of fiction there. As far as the other charge Mr. Berge made, yes, I did respond to the constituent who had a question about COVID-19 fatalities in Catati. I am able to multitask and I do do that. That had nothing to do with this particular meeting. And I just thought I had clarified that since unsurprisingly, it was made to sound quite different than what the reality actually was. So thank you for that.
Okay, and I do not see anybody else with hands up or microphones being unmuted. So again, thank you very much for the presentation. I'm always a bit boggled by budgets and you made it very clear and very concise. So thank you very much for that. And if I don't see any more hands being thrown up by the council or staff, I will deem this meeting adjourned at 8:00 PM. Thank you all so much for your participation online again today.